The May sixteenth, City of North St. Paul City Council Workshop to order at 5:36 PM. Six-minute delay start, my apologies to everyone here. Roll call?
Councilmember Cole.
Here.
Councilmember Schwer.
Here.
Councilmember Nordby.
Here.
Councilmember Wong is absent and Mayor Mongi is absent.
Do we adopt the agenda or did I just look at you, Brian, to run the whole show?
We gotta adopt.
All right, is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved, Your Honor.
Any want to pose?
I need all of them.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. You need my third vote.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Brian, would you like to take over the first topic?
Thank you so much. Two topics tonight. First one up is a review of the 2022 financial report with the city's audit firm of Malloy Montage Karnowski and Radasovich. Dan, we'll let you start it off, please.
Well, Brian, first of all, that was better than I could have done. I'd have just gone with MMKR.
I should have went for that.
But, but I don't know if you're right or wrong. Before we get into the review of the 2022 financial report, I would like to formally introduce the city council, a new employee that started sixth, this is her sixth week, who's an accountant in the finance department. And so I'd like to introduce Mary Kay Heinan, who has joined us. She brings to the city twenty-five, over twenty-five years of accounting experience, including ten years as a state auditor, three years with Clifton, Larson, and Allen, much easier than the MMK, I'm telling you, that was, that one I can do. As an accounting manager controller, five years as an accountant supervisor with the city of Minneapolis, and four years as an accountant with the city of Bloomington. You can see she is now going up the scale and coming to the city of North St. Paul. So there's Mary Kay, and she's been, just in her five weeks in two days, has been just a great addition to, for the city and has been just fabulous for us. With that, we're going to have a representative of MMKR, Jackie Heagle, will present. She is the principal with MMKR and has worked on our audit for 2022. I think you're going to find some very good news. We have net position increases in our general fund, our enterprise funds, and our internal service funds, so I think it's very, very good news. So I'm going to turn it over to Jackie. If you have any questions, I'll certainly step up and answer those for you, but I'm going to turn it over. Jackie, thank you.
Good evening and thank you for having me tonight. As Dan mentioned, my name is Jackie Heagle and I am the partner that works on the city of North St. Paul audit and here to present the audit results for the year ended December 31st, 2022. You should have received as part of your packets a few documents. One, the annual comprehensive financial report, which is a city document that gives all the financial results of the city along with some footnote disclosures, a statistical section. There's also a special purpose report, which summarizes the audit opinions of the city, as well as then there's a management report, and that is our MMKR document that summarizes the results of the audit, both the financial resorts and results and the compliance part of the audit. So for tonight, that's the document I'm going to be walking through if you do want to follow along. And feel free, if you want to, if you have questions, you can stop me throughout or we can wait until the end and answer any questions at that time as well. Just to give a little background, some scope and timing of the audit, our team is onsite in January, and at that time we do some of our preliminary fieldwork procedures, so we're reviewing the internal controls of the city, doing our transaction testing with the Office of the State Auditor, their legal compliance manual. We do an inventory count with the electric inventory. And then we're back a few days in February, we call it our interim fieldwork. We, you know, kind of wrap up some of the prelims, start into some of the final fieldwork, but then we're here early to mid-March, and that's when we do the bulk of our final fieldwork, testing procedures. And then from there, we're preparing what's called the annual comprehensive financial report that you have in front of you, and then here tonight then to present those audit results. Our role as auditors is to issue an opinion on the financial statements, to note that it is fairly stated. As part of our audit, we're also reviewing the internal controls and compliance over the financial statement audit, as well as with that Minnesota legal compliance audit. So each year, the Office of the State Auditor releases what's known as the Minnesota Legal Compliance Manual, and there are specific statutes in there that they require auditors to test for, so we're not necessarily looking at every statute. It depends, that guide that they release that we're required to look for each year. One comment I'll note is that when a government receives and expends more than $750,000 in federal funding, there's what's known as a separate single audit of just the federal dollars. The city of North St. Paul did not have that for the 2022 audit year. Some of you might be aware that the city has received some of the ARPA federal funding. You've received to date about 1.3 million, but that is all unspent as of year end '22, so there's unearned revenue on the books that those dollars will be spent in a future year. And if you hit that 750,000 of spending in one year, it will trigger what's called a single audit then, where there's a federal audit of just those federal funds. So something you're not seeing for '22, but potentially as you move forward in the future. So moving through some of the results of the audit, I'm on page one of the management report, under the audit opinion and finding section. We issued what's known as an unmodified opinion on the city's basic financial statement. That is a clean opinion, that is the opinion you're looking for when you're reviewing your financial report. You'll note there that in the current year, local governments were required to implement a new GASB standard, so a governmental accounting standards board issues new standards, and in the current year, you were required to implement GASB statement number 87 for leases. That new standard establishes one single model of accounting for all lease transactions, so some of the old terminology of capital leases and operating leases are no longer used, and it's just, you have a leased asset and a leased liability if you are leasing equipment, and vice versa. Now you're required to report a lease receivable and a deferred inflow of resources if you're the lesser in any transaction. So one thing you're going to see on your financial statements that's different from the past is you do have a lease receivable, because you are recording a lease receivable and offsetting deferred inflow for any cell tower antenna agreements that you have. And then you'll continue to recognize the revenue each year as you're collecting that cash, but you are required to now put that receivable on your financial report. So that is a change in accounting practice starting in 2022 going forward that you see in. Following through the other audit opinions as part of our review of the internal controls of the city, we do have
May 16th, City of North St. Paul City Council Workshop to order at 5:36 PM. Six-minute delay start, my apologies to everyone here. Roll call?
Councilmember Cole.
Here.
Councilmember Schwer.
Here.
Councilmember Nordby.
Here.
Councilmember Wong is absent and Mayor Mongi is absent.
Do we adopt the agenda or did I just look at you, Brian, to run the whole show? All right. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved, Your Honor.
Any want to pose? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. You need my third vote.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Brian, would you like to take over the first topic?
Thank you so much. Two topics tonight. First one up is review of the 2022 financial report with the city's audit firm of Malloy Montage Karnowski and Radasovich. Dan, we'll let you start it off, please.
Well, Brian, first of all, that was better than nothing. I'd have just gone with MMKR.
I should have went for that.
But, but I don't know if you're right or wrong. Before we get into the review of the 2022 financial report, I would like to introduce, formally introduce the city council, a new employee that started sixth, this is her sixth week, who's an accountant in the finance department. And so I'd like to introduce Mary Kay Hyman, who has joined us. She brings to the city 25, over 25 years of accounting experience, including 10 years as a state auditor, three years with Clifton, Larson, and Allen, much easier than the MMK, I'm telling you, that was, that one I can do, as an accounting manager controller, five years as an accountant supervisor with the city of Minneapolis, and four years as an accountant with the city of Bloomington. You can see she is now going up the scale and coming to the city of North St. Paul. So there's Mary Kay, and she's been, just in her five weeks in two days, has been just a great addition to, for the city and has been just fabulous for us. With that, we're going to have a representative of MMKR, Jackie Heagle, will present. She is the principal with MMKR and has worked on our audit for 2022. I think you're going to find some very good news. We have net position increases in our general fund, our enterprise funds, and our internal service funds, so I think it's very, very good news. So I'm going to turn it over to Jackie. If you have any questions, I'll certainly step up and answer those for you, but I'm going to turn it over. Jackie, thank you.
Good evening and thank you for having me tonight. As Dan mentioned, my name is Jackie Heagle and I am the partner that works on the city of North St. Paul audit and here to present the audit results for the year ended December 31st, 2022. You should have received as part of your packets a few documents. One, the annual comprehensive financial report, which is a city document that gives all the financial results of the city along with some footnote disclosures, a statistical section. There's also a special purpose report which summarizes the audit opinions of the city, as well as then there's a management report, and that is our MMKR document that summarizes the results of the audit, both the financial resorts and results and the compliance part of the audit. So for tonight, that's the document I'm going to be walking through if you do want to follow along. And feel free, if you want to, if you have questions, you can stop me throughout or we can wait until the end and answer any questions at that time as well. Just to give a little background, some scope and timing of the audit, our team is on site in January, and at that time we do some of our preliminary fieldwork procedures, so we're reviewing the internal controls of the city, doing our transaction testing with the Office of the State Auditor, their legal compliance manual. We do an inventory count with the electric inventory. And then we're back a few days in February, we call it our interim fieldwork. We, you know, kind of wrap up some of the prelims, start into some of the final fieldwork, but then we're here early to mid-March, and that's when we do the bulk of our final fieldwork, testing procedures. And then from there, we're preparing what's called this annual comprehensive financial report that you have in front of you, and then here tonight then to present those audit results. Our role as auditors is to issue an opinion on the financial statements, to note that it is fairly stated. As part of our audit, we're also reviewing the internal controls and compliance over the financial statement audit, as well as with that Minnesota legal compliance audit. So each year, the Office of the State Auditor releases what's known as the Minnesota Legal Compliance Manual, and there are specific statutes in there that they require auditors to test for, so we're not necessarily looking at every statute. It depends, that guide that they release that we're required to look for each year. One comment I'll note is that when a government receives and expends more than $750,000 in federal funding, there's what's known as a separate single audit of just the federal dollars. The city of North St. Paul did not have that for the 2022 audit year. Some of you might be aware that the city has received some of the ARPA federal funding. You've received to date about 1.3 million, but that is all unspent as of year-end '22, so there's unearned revenue on the books that those dollars will be spent in a future year. And if you hit that 750,000 of spending in one year, it will trigger what's called a single audit then, where there's a federal audit of just those federal funds. So something you're not seeing for '22, but potentially as you move forward in the future. So moving through some of the results of the audit, I'm on page one of the management report, under the audit opinion and finding section. We issued what's known as an unmodified opinion on the city's basic financial statement. That is a clean opinion, that is the opinion you're looking for when you're reviewing your financial report. You'll note there that in the current year, local governments were required to implement a new GASB standard, so a governmental accounting standards board issues new standards, and in the current year, you were required to implement GASB statement number 87 for leases. That new standard establishes one single model of accounting for all lease transactions, so some of the old terminology of capital leases and operating leases are no longer used, and it's just, you have a leased asset and a leased liability if you are leasing equipment, and vice versa. Now you're required to report a lease receivable and a deferred inflow of resources if you're the lesser in any transaction. So one thing you're going to see on your financial statements that's different from the past is you do have a lease receivable, because you are recording a lease receivable and offsetting deferred inflow for any cell tower antenna agreements that you have. And then you'll continue to recognize the revenue each year as you're collecting that cash, but you are required to now put that receivable on your financial report. So that is a change in accounting practice starting in 2022 going forward that you see in. Following through the other audit opinions as part of our review of the internal controls of the city, we do have one comment that we note as a significant deficiency that you've seen in the past, and that's just with that segregation of duties, limited size of the office staff. And as Dan already mentioned, you know, there has been positions hired now, but you have had openings in your finance department that limited that segregation of duties as you're walking through all your different transaction cycles. We did not have any instances of noncompliance to report as part of all of our government auditing standard testing. And then we did have one comment to report with the Minnesota legal compliance testing, and that's with the payment of dispersments. So five of the 40 dispersments that we sampled in the current year were not paid within that 35-day payment period. So that's a similar finding that you saw in the prior year that's still carrying forward into the current year.
Is that just a function of when we have our council meetings? Is that the primary, I mean, it's, it's been ongoing since I've been here. I don't, I don't view it as an issue, but I know it's a rule?
You know, I mean, it is fairly common, you know, in government that, that this is an item that does get written up. We still have the responsibility to comply with it. We've tried to, we've made some improvement with that. Hopefully this year we can clean up a little bit more. It, it's kind of tricky. So when an invoice is received and it comes in, it goes through our system, sometimes it can be delays on our department heads in approving them, and then obviously when we have two city council meetings a month, there can be a delay, like the next city council meeting will be three weeks. So in essence, that's 21 days already of your 35 days that are, that are taken up. That's why really we need to enhance, there's a delegated authority to the city manager to do what they call specials, so we can issue checks underneath our city manager's authority and then report them at the following city council meeting, so we can try to limit that.
Moving on then to the top of page two there, as part of an audit, every year we are required to follow up on any findings from the previous year, so any findings you had in the 2021 audit, we do additional testing procedures on to see how the city or the local government took action on those comments and findings. So you're going to see there, there were a few that considered, you know, action was taken in the current year. If you're looking at the first bullet and the third bullet there, they kind of go together. That is both relating with the credit card transactions of the city for the past couple of audits. You saw that there was both an internal control finding and a legal compliance finding for not obtaining all the receipts related with credit card transactions. So as part of our audit testing for the 2022 year, receipts were obtained for the credit card transactions, so you're seeing that that finding is no longer noted in the audit. I do want to comment though on it, just to stress that the importance of, you know, it's not a finding in the current year, but you're going to see as we go on, it's a hot topic at the OSA. So just stressing the importance of making sure you are continuing as you move forward, obtaining all of those receipts timely, making sure that they're properly being reviewed, and that all the expenditures or all the transactions on those credit cards are also meeting a proper public purpose as you continue to move forward. The other bullet there in the middle that you're noting, that was cleaned up in the current year and no longer considered a finding, is in the prior year, there was a finding for broker certifications. So anytime you are doing transactions with an investment broker, they're required to sign an acknowledgement form that they are aware of the city policy and Minnesota statutes, and they will invest properly in accordance with that. In the prior year, there was one form that was not obtained, so those forms were all obtained in the current year. And once again, just a reminder to try to obtain those forms at the beginning of the year as you move forward each year from any broker that you're working with. Moving further down on that page, we have some other observations and recommendations. These aren't noted as findings, but just other recommendations as we went through the audit process. For those of you that have been through the audit review in the past, you're going to see several of these are carrying forward from prior year. There is a couple new ones I'll comment on. But the first one is just with the individual fund deficits. As you look through your financial statements, I believe there's six funds that are in a deficit position. So I always like to comment to make council and city management aware that you need to make sure you're monitoring those funds. There's times where there is reasons why you are going in a deficit, but making sure that you have the plan in place, that those continue to improve. You're going to see that there are three of those funds are special revenue funds specifically with TIP funds, you know, so just making sure that you're monitoring the projections and monitoring those TIP dollars, that you should be receiving tax increment that will eventually cause a result in those improvements in those funds. The one capital project fund is your MSA fund, and that's related with construction, the timing of how you have to record your construction activity versus, as you get your MSA funds, you get an allotment each year, so as you record your revenue each year, that should improve in that fund. And then the last fund is the fiber optic fund that many of you are probably aware of, and I've seen the deficit in that, which leads to my next comment on the page. You know, this fund has had a significant deficit in that unrestricted net position, so just want to comment to make sure everyone is aware at year-end that unrestricted deficit net position is just under 2.2 million, something that the city has seen in the past and I know has continued to talk about. The third comment that you're seeing there on the bottom of the page is with deposit and escrow reconciliations. This is an area, I know in the prior year and the current year, as we went through the audit process, that these deposit and escrows aren't being reconciled throughout the year. To make sure that those ending liabilities, you should be able to provide a listing as far as, you know, the vendor of who those need to be paid back to as those projects are completed. So we're recommending to the city just to review your policies and procedures in place and make sure that something gets implemented in 2023 and those balances are reconciled and properly paid out or collected as needed in accordance with the policy. Moving on to the top of page three, there is one new comment in the current year just related with employee personnel files, more of just a recommendation, you know, as part of our payroll testing throughout the audit. It's noted that some of the payroll forms, when somebody changes their withholdings or benefits, that those forms are being filed by pay period versus in an employee personnel file. So the city was able to obtain all the information and to support all the information we needed from a payroll testing standpoint. It's just our recommendation that, you know, maybe you should be filing on more in personnel files so that you can more timely provide the information. Anytime anything's being asked, you can go to a personnel file versus knowing which pay period it changed and having to go back potentially several years to find the information. And then the next two comments you're going to see here, these are not specific to the city of North St. Paul. These are some comments that we are putting in all of our management reports for local governments, like I said, they're hot topics at the Office of the State Auditor. One relates with the deposit sweep accounts, which I don't believe that specifically your city utilizes. But some banks have arrangements with local governments that any balance in excess of the federal deposit insurance corporation limits are swept into like an investment account overnight. And so if you are ever using any arrangements like that, we're just making everyone aware, you should review your arrangements because sometimes there's a lag of when those sweeps occur, and if there's ever a lag, potentially your deposits are subject to custodial credit risk and not properly collateralized. So that's just a comment that's recently come up, you know, with some recent bank failures and topics at the Office of the State Auditor. So if you ever do use deposit sweep accounts, just make sure you're reviewing those arrangements to make sure that the deposits are fully sweeping before the end of the business day. And then the next comment is with credit card transactions. You know, the Office of the State Auditor has released some statement of positions just recently on this. It's kind of been an area of priority there as well, just because of the susceptibility and the concern in that area. So as I already commented, you know, just making sure that all purchases made with credit cards, you guys continue, you know, to review those, making sure you have all the proper supporting documentation and making sure everything does meet a proper public purpose as you continue to move forward. I'm going to move forward then a few pages to page seven. Have a few graphs here just of market values and tax capacity of the city. So if you're looking on page seven, it shows some of the taxable market value, some trend history for the past 10 years. For the current year, you're seeing that the city's taxable market value for 2022 saw an increase of about 5%. And flip into the next page, you're going to see that tax capacity graph very consistent as well. For the 2022 year, you saw an increase there of about 4%. And your graphs there look very similar to, you know, all the other local governments that we work with as well. They're seeing those increases in both market value and tax capacity for '22. Moving on to page nine, this starts some of the financial results, specifically talking your governmental funds. So the table here, it summarizes all the governmental funds of the city, a comparison of 2021 compared to 2022. The top part of that table shows up by classification of fund balance, so whether you have the non-spendable fund balance, your restricted, committed, assigned, and your unassigned fund balance. And the bottom shows up I would consider the major funds of the city, and then all the non-major funds combined on one line. So overall, for the 2022 year, you saw an increase in the governmental fund balance of about 2.7 million. If you're looking at the bottom part of that table, you're going to see majority of that increase is in that street improvement revolving fund. So in the current year, the city issued bonds, and not all of those funds were spent as of year-end, so you have some unspent bond proceeds that are restricted if you're looking at that top part of the table. And those funds will be spent, you know, in '23 as the construction continues to be spent down those proceeds. And then you saw there, your general fund saw an increase of about 600,000 resulting in that unassigned fund balance increase. Moving on to page 10, this summarizes, pages 10 and 11 summarizes the governmental fund revenue and expenditure on a per capita basis. We do have some statewide information to help compare to, the statewide information though is from the 2021 year. That information obviously isn't available for '22 until all the audits are submitted to the state. If you're looking at 2022 comparing it to the '21 year, you're seeing your governmental fund revenue per capita increased about $45. Some of the changes you're seeing as you look through that table there, you saw increases in the property tax levy resulting in your property tax revenues to go up. There was some increases in the tax increments. There was some increased valuations in the current year, and I believe that some of the districts received their first year of increment as well. You're seeing license and permit activity increase. There is increased building activity in the current year, more roof permits obtained in the current year. I believe there was a hailstorm damage resulting in some more increased building activity. And then the one offset you're seeing is down in that other revenue. You're seeing a decrease of about $60 per capita. Some of that is due to, there was a gain on sale of assets in the prior year specifically in a tax increment fund. The other is the results of your investment earnings in the market going down in 2022. Moving on to page 11, similar table here just of the governmental fund expenditures per capita. Overall, you saw an increase of about $85 per capita. Some of that, if you're looking on the top portion of that table under the current expenditures, most of that resulted in the public safety area, just increased personal service costs in the police department area, and also in the contractual services in the inspection department directly related to the increased building permits in the, in 2022. Your capital outlay in construction, you saw increases in the current year there just with the street improvement projects going on throughout 2022. And then you saw the offset down in debt service, a decrease in the current year, and that was mainly due to, last year there was a contract for deed paid off, as well as the city used some funds on hand to pay off a couple of bonds early in 2021, so that number was higher, resulting now in the current year, those bonds were paid off. Going on to page 12, the next few graphs I'll talk about, these are specific to just the general fund, so your main operating fund of the city. You're seeing for the 2022 year, you ended the year with a cash and investment balance in that general fund of about 4.7 million. That's an increase of about 520,000 from the prior year. And your total fund balance in the general fund at year-end was about 4.3 million, which is an increase of about 635,000 compared to the prior year, and that's also compared to a budget that was balanced that was approved by council. So overall came in about 635,000 better than budgeted. The city policy at year-end is to allow the fund balance in that general fund to grow to 40% of the subsequent year's budgeted expenditures for the current year 2022, with the intent to grow up to 50% in future years. So at year-end 2022, your unassigned fund balance in the general fund was at that 46% of the subsequent year's budgeted expenditures. The graphs on the next page are specific with the general fund revenue. For the current year, you saw an increase of about 730,000 in revenue compared to 2021, and they were about 300,000 over budget in the general fund. Some of the variances in the general fund budget to actual were in the tax revenue area, intergovernmental revenues and license and permits. Most of that just due to coming in better than anticipated in the budget. And when you're looking current year to prior year, the majority of the change was in taxes and license and permits. So similar items that I already commented on, your increase in the tax levy resulting in the property taxes revenue to increase, and just more building activity with more permits issued resulting in that license and permit area to increase. Page 14 shows similar graphs focusing on the general fund expenditures. So for the 2022 year, the general fund ended about 325,000 under budget. Most of that was due to vacant positions. You saw under budget in the public safety expenditure area of about 120,000. That was mainly within the fire department and inspections department. And then the general government expenditures are about 90,000 under budget, and that's mainly in that finance department, once again due to vacant positions in the current year. Overall, the expenditures increased about 990,000 compared to the prior year. The largest increase was in the public safety function, which was up about almost 700,000. And once again, previously as talked, there was increases in the personal service costs within the police department, and also in that contractual services in the inspection department with more building permits being issued and needing more inspections completed. Moving through the management report, then the next several pages we'll talk about, this focuses on the enterprise funds of the city, so those are those business-type funds of the city, your electric, water, surface water, wastewater, fiber optic, and solid waste funds. So if you're looking at the table here on page 15, that's a snapshot of what your net position is at 2022 compared to 2021. Overall, that net position was up about 1.6 million, mainly all in that unrestricted area. You're seeing just positive operating results throughout your enterprise funds. And in the bottom part of that table, you can kind of see the results by each of the funds of the city. And we'll walk through each of those briefly, flipping over to page 16. Have a graph and table on most of these funds. So page 16 focuses in on the electric fund of the city. You can see in the top part, that graph gives five-year of history just of the sales within the electric fund operations, as well as the purchase utilities and other operating expenses. You know, in 2022, you're seeing increased activity. As your sales go up, you're going to see more of those purchased utilities align with that. If you're looking at the bottom portion, that table there, kind of focusing in on the gross profit from 2021 to 2022, you did see a slight increase in the gross profit there. Overall, the electric fund did have an increase in rates in 2022, but you're seeing income before any transfers of about 970,000 in that electric fund operation for 2022. Flipping over a couple pages then to page 18, I'll walk through a table of each of those utility operations, starting on page 18 with the water fund. For the 2022 year, you saw your operating revenues decreased about 116,000. Overall, there was a decrease in consumption in '22 compared to 2021. And your operating expenses increased about 70,000 primarily in personal service costs. But overall, if you're looking at the top part of that table, your operating income for the year ended at just under 990,000 for the 2022 year. Next page, that table there focuses on the surface water fund, the operations for the last five years. Not any major changes, but you did see, you know, a slight increase in your operating revenues of about 11,000, just duly, truly due to just the number of customers in the current year saw an increase. Operating expenses were pretty flat. Overall, though, seeing an operating income of about 430,000. Same with the wastewater fund as you move forward to the next page. No significant changes in, you know, operating activity. You saw a slight decrease in the revenues and an increase in some of the expenditures, mainly in some personal service costs. But once again, ended the year with some positive operating results, operating income of about 525,000. And then page 21 focuses on the fiber optic fund. And then page 21 focuses on the fiber optic fund. Already commented a little bit on this fund, but just overall, you know, the 2022 year, you're still ending the year with a deficit net position. You did see a slight improvement of about 67,000, but overall still a deficit of about 600,000 in net position. So just making sure as a city that you're continuing to review the operations of this fund as it is in a deficit position. And then the last enterprise fund is that solid waste fund. And that's on page 22. So once again, this fund is also seeing positive operating results. You had a slight increase in the operating revenues of about 10,000 from the prior year, which is with the increase in the number of customers. Operating expenses were pretty flat, change of about 8,900. But overall saw operating income ending the year at about 63,000. So once again, all the utility operations all did see positive operating results, going back to that very first table I showed, that snapshot of the enterprise fund seeing that increase in operations from 2021 to 2022. And then page 23, I'll just comment quickly on this page. This is a snapshot of what we as auditors call the government-wide financial statements. So this takes all your governmental funds of your financial statements, all your enterprise funds of the financial statements. It rolls it up into kind of one snapshot of the city. It includes, it's full accrual accounting, so it includes all the capital asset activity, all the debt activity of the city. It also includes any OPEB liabilities, which is other post-employment benefits, any pension liabilities you're required to record under GASB standards. So when you look at that, a snapshot from 2022 compared to '21, you're seeing an increase in that net position of about 2.2 million. It kind of breaks, it breaks it down between governmental activities and business type activities. The governmental activities, you saw an increase of about 500,000. A lot of that is mainly in net position that's restricted for tax increment financing. And then your business type activities there, you're seeing that increase of 1.7 million, which is directly related to each of the utility enterprise funds that we just walked through, but directly related to the positive operating results of those funds. So with that, I would open it up if there are any questions or any other pages you want to specifically talk more on.
I have none. Thank you.
Thank you.
I mean, this is my third time through this. We're way cleaner now than we were. Hats off to Dan and his team. And from a credit card transaction standpoint, thank you, Dan. Thanks, Brian. And thank all the directors for putting a big focus on making sure when we had credit card receipts, that where we had credit card receipts with credit card expenses, that was a hot topic when I started. So it's good, it's good to see that we've got that cleaned up.
Yeah, hopefully you, you look at this report and you see the positives that are there. We're in very good financial shape. Some of the items that raise a little bit of concern when we talk about the escrow accounts, that's something that we've been dealing with. I'll work with Brandy this year and we'll try to get those things reconciled. That's a promise that I've made to our auditor that we would get that done. We've got the bandwidth now with Mary Kay on board, so, so we should be able to get through that. The rest of it, we're really looking, really looking very solid. A big part of that reason is because the city council, the support that the city council gives to finance and gives to our city manager and really, you know, looking at and adopting like last year, our 10-year financial plans. So we're looking and planning for the future, looking where we're at today. Even though our fund balances are going up, doesn't mean that they're going to remain that way because we've got a lot of needs in the city, which in June, we'll start to talk about our budget process. But we are really looking good right now and so much of it goes to the leadership of our city manager, Brian Frandl, and the support from the city council. So if there's any other questions, I'd be glad to take them. If you have any questions outside of this, you know where to find me and I'll get back to you as soon as possible. Mayor, do you have any questions here?
No, I'm just looking over as far as, I've never seen one of these before, so looking at the funds, the transfer out to each one of them. I'm sure there must be something that it's being transferred to as far as.
Yes. Yeah, so, so, yeah, so right now, the general fund is supported, I believe, by $820,000 that's being transferred out of mainly enterprise funds, also HRA and EDA that goes into the general fund. So even when you look at our general fund operation today and it ended 2022 with a 600, I think, $636,000 positive, actually, we're still not even, we're not even breaking even because we needed to get $820,000 transferred in. So that's kind of the benefit that we have in many cities do this of transferring from enterprise funds into your general fund for your operation. If we didn't do that, then we would end, our other option or main option would be at this point in time is to levy $820,000 more, which would be approximate 15 to 16% levy increase. And the city council has decided not to go that, that way. And that's why when we get into our workshops for the budget, you know, one of the questions and council member Cole, Cole knows is that we need to look at, how do we, how do we change up potential revenue sources? How do we look at potentially reducing some of our expenditures and, and still balancing the needs of the city and the residents?
Because that's what I was, you know, when you look at that, how much comes out of it, where it comes from, is just understanding that we're not, you know, as far as, you said, we're not, we're not barely breaking even.
Yeah.
Because we're grabbing out of those funds. And when it's grabbing out, it's, I'm assuming that the council does something with that? I mean, is that, is that just like a slush fund where it's just how much money, how do you know, you know, how much money do you move out of each fund and?
It is, it is incorporated into the budget and approved by the city council, so you will see exactly what's being transferred in and transferred out. There can be no additional movement of money transferring from one fund to another unless city council approves.
Perfect. Okay. That's answer my questions. Thank you.
Just wait till the fun starts in June. We will have fun in June. Come on.
I need electric fun for myself.
I don't have any questions, but thank you so much for the audit process. I know it's, I'm currently going through it in my employer right now and I'm a big part of it, so nice job, you guys.
Next item up on the agenda is, looks like WSB and floodplain.
We're all going to be on stilts now?
All right. Sorry about that. Got the technology worked out now. Good evening, Mayor, City Council members. My name is Rebecca Haug and I am a senior project manager with WSB and have had the honor of working on the city of North St. Paul's flood resiliency plan. And so a little bit about the history of this plan. The city went after grant funding from the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency last year. They were awarded about $52,000 to study areas in the city to determine some solutions for some flood issues that are going on in the community. The goal is to provide implementation framework or a plan that I'll go over this evening with you, that's based mainly on vulnerable populations within this community. So that was something with this, we were very focused on certain areas of North St. Paul with the realization that there are other areas within the city that have flooding issues, but this grant funding was for specific areas within the city. So that's what the focus of this study is for. So again, background, MPCA awarded the city money back in July. We had a kickoff meeting. One of the best partners for the city on this project was the watershed district. Ramsey-Washington Metro Watershed District worked very closely with us throughout this whole study. We looked at mapping, we did a lot of modeling and looked at vulnerability analysis throughout the city. And what that incorporates is there's a lot of different demographic information available at the state and at the federal level. So we took all of that information for the city of North St. Paul and narrowed down our scope for this study. We also held an open house in April. We did have quite a few attendees at that open house, gathered information from the residents. Not a lot of the residents were from these focus areas, but we were able to speak to a lot of the residents in the city and address some of their concerns and issues. And now we're at the stage where we are presenting the draft report. At your June 6th meeting, you will be approving the final report. And then that report will be going off to the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency for the completion of this project. So what and why do we plan for floods? A lot of the reasons being is our climates are changing and our infrastructure that was put back in place way back when was not built for these changes in our climate and our precipitation. Areas were built up during the time when this information was not known. Since 2000, rain events of six inches are four times more frequent than in the previous three decades. So I'm sure the city has been seeing an increase in flooding. And so by doing this planning, we're able to help people determine what the city needs to do to reduce those flooding occurrences. So why do planning? Again, it's important. It helps your community. It helps you identify areas so that as you just got done doing your budget discussion, you can do long-term planning and start building in infrastructure into your city CIP, manage stress and uncertainty during your flood events, and then continue to develop and over time, build in different parameters to help the city with their flooding needs. So how do you plan? Again, the city took the models that were already created, looked at a lot of information that's already out there and then did more recent updating models with the changes in precipitation. There's new information that you can put into the models and see where you have more flood risk and concern. So flood resiliency is again minimizing damage, looking at what we can do to reduce risk to people and infrastructure and look at opportunities to provide for flood storage areas. That was a big focus of our planning efforts as well, is where can more of this floodwater sit within the city limits? Through this, we also came up with lists of things the homeowners can do, not just in the focus areas, but throughout the city, again, working in partnership with the watershed district. Ramsey-Washington has a lot of grant programs that allow for people to do more resilient landscaping. The other is looking at how your property is graded and controlling the drainage that way. There's a program called Adopt a Drain. It's statewide and it's throughout other states. Minnesota has the most robust program. So when we had the open house, we talked to property owners about, if you see you have a storm drain clogged in your neighborhood and it's causing water to back up in your street, clean it out. Let Public Works know too, if you can't get it cleaned out, that you have a clogged storm drain, but just creating some more awareness for property owners to take part and notice and help clean, clean up the storm sewer, storm sewer system. Again, there's different programs with the watershed district. The big one that causes a lot of flooding issues that people don't think about a lot, a lot of people have smart irrigation systems, but they don't think to turn them off all the time because sometimes they're not very smart. And so people will sprinkle during rain events and that can increase your propensity to flooding. So just being aware of those things and if there is damaged infrastructure, call the city and make them aware of it. So these are the areas that residents highlighted, that we highlighted as part of vulnerable populations, the yellow dots that are out here. These are the areas that came up in the modeling as having high propensity for vulnerable populations, being very flood prone. Working with the watershed district, we know that the North St. Paul Urban Ecology Center is in their CIP to have some work done, so that will help, but continuing to partner with them on other projects. And then other recommendations to reduce flooding in these areas. The other is we did quite a bit of outreach. There is a website dedicated for this plan that we had surveys available. Did any of you fill out the survey? If not, it's still available for you to fill out. We did have 13 residents or 12 residents complete the surveys. We also had poster boards throughout the community. We did mailings to the people within the focus areas. I presented at the Business Chamber event, talking about this and encouraging business members to get involved. We had approximately 13 residents at the open house, which I think is successful for an open house. It was a gorgeous night. It was the night of the football draft, so we had a few people who wanted us to hurry up. We did send out 100 individual postcards again to the people within those focus areas. And then we also developed a fact sheet that people were able to take with them just to have some better understanding about what this is. Going forward, the website will remain. The report, once it's approved by the MPCA, will be going on your city website. People can still look at the survey, they can still complete the survey and provide information. So here's a little bit more about the open house. We had tables and information around in your council chambers here. Did a short presentation informing residents similar to this presentation to you, providing them many options and suggestions on things they can do on their own property. Ramsey-Washington also participated in the open house as well as the presentation and gave information to them as well for that. So recommendations, that's kind of the big thing when you do a report is what's going to come out of this? What are we going to do next? And within the report, we have both long-term and short-term. A lot of it revolves around planning for capital projects as well as policies and programs as to how to fund doing stormwater projects. One of the great values in partnering with the watershed district is a lot of the grant funds gather more points if you are partnering with another entity. So by the city completing this study and the watershed district working with the city, both entities can go after grant funds and have a higher chance of receiving funding. So that's some long-term goals that we spoke to the watershed district about is how do we leverage that and get as much funding that's available? There is a lot of infrastructure funding coming out and so it's something we'll keep an eye out for and see if we can find some opportunities to do some projects. Short-term, the city can work on increasing street sweeping, keep all of the leaves and debris out of the storm sewer system, that helps. And then ongoing engagement, having that website up will be a new tool for the city to use to get information out to the community and the residents. When we know we're going to get a large rain event, you could put posts out in social media, things like that to make people aware, check your, your storm drain, clean it out. Or if you have a low-lying area, just beware, we're getting a lot of rain, you may have some water standing. And then just more education, continuing to do community surveys. Something that we heard from the homeowners is they would like more opportunities to have open houses like we held, to talk about the issues they're dealing with and brainstorm about solutions on their property. So with that, next steps, like I said, city council is scheduled right now to recommend approving this report on June 6th. And then it will be submitted to the MPCA and you'll have your final report and be able to use that going forward for planning efforts for flood resiliency. And with that, I am open to any questions you may have. I know I rushed through, but I knew I was tight on time, so. I know I rushed through, but I knew I was tight on time, so.
Thank you very much. And there's a whole giant appendix of pictures and charts and everything else that follows it. For anyone listening at home, I would encourage them to open up the packet and review it. Um, it shows potential flood-prone structures. Um, not really sure other than green and blue, um, if what, what, what the colors mean, how that it says district and local. But um, you can dial it right down to the house.
Yeah, and the local is the city is responsible for, district is the watershed district is responsible for.
So the big green dot on my house, I need to talk to the watershed district? Okay.
Anything else? Thank you very much.
No, I'm going to hit you with it. Oh, sorry, my mic's on. Can you approve? Um, is there any other additional business? Motion to adjourn?
So moved. So moved.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
I've been waiting to use this. Adjourned.
Nice.
At 6:25.
I wanted to second it. I never got a chance to do that.
Next one down, consent. Right from the affair, okay, thank you. Oh, you're right. Sure, write your note, sorry. Okay, we're looking at to remove an item I from the consent agenda. Need a motion to adopt the agenda when we get rid of I.
I or J?
She has I on here.
The non-essential union supplement agreement? Oh, to remove it, gotcha.
Are we good with removing I? So, can we get a motion to adopt the agenda without I, please?
Move to motion to remove item.
Thank you, Councilmember Schwers?
Second.
Councilmember Norby? Are we good? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All right, sorry about that. Little confusion on my side. All right. We're looking at presentations. Can you read the proclamations, please?
Thank you, Mayor. We have two proclamations tonight. First proclamation is National Police Week for 2023. So, the Peace Officers Memorial Day is May 15th, 2023. National Police Week is May 15th through the 21st of 2023. Whereas, the Congress and President of the United States have designated the week in which May 15th occurs as National Police Week and May 15th as National Peace Officer Memorial Day. And whereas, the North St. Paul Police Department plays an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of all members of the community. And whereas, it is important that all citizens know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices of their law enforcement agency. And that members of our law enforcement agency recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence and disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception, and the weak against oppression. And whereas, the men and women of the North St. Paul Police Department unceasingly provide this vital public service. Now therefore be it resolved that the North St. Paul City Council hereby declare the week of May 15th to May 21st, 2023, to be National Police Week in the city of North St. Paul, and May 15th as the National Peace Officers Memorial Day. Be it further resolved that the North St. Paul City Council calls upon all citizens to join in commemorating law enforcement officers, past and present, who by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities have rendered a dedicated service to their communities and have established for themselves an enviable and enduring reputation for preserving the rights and security of all citizens. Be it further resolved to observe the May 15th and National Peace Officer Memorial Day in honor of law enforcement officers who through their courageous deeds have made the ultimate sacrifice in service up to their community, to include North St. Paul Police Officer Richard Crittenden Senior and Chief Walter Housie, or have become disabled in the performance of duty, and let us recognize and pay respect to the survivors of our fallen heroes. In witness whereof, I appear to unto set my hand and caused the seal of the city of North St. Paul to be affixed this 16th day of May, 2023. Next proclamation is Memorial Day, 2023. So, whereas since the founding of the United States of America 244 years ago, the men and women of our military have risked their lives to protect our great nation from all enemies, foreign and domestic. And whereas Memorial Day each year serves as a solemn reminder of the scourge of war and its bitter aftermath of sorrow. And whereas, the first day of remembrance was observed in 1868 to honor soldiers who died in the Civil War. And for 152 years, our nation has set aside a day to pay homage to American patriots, our loved ones who have fallen in service of our country and who lie now in hallowed graves throughout the land, having sacrificed their lives and freedom so that the war might end. And whereas this day has traditionally been devoted to paying homage to lost loved ones and their families. And whereas, 1971, Congress established our National Observance of Memorial Day as the last Monday in May to honor all our fallen military heroes who serve our country on land, sea, and air. And whereas Memorial Day gives us the opportunity to reflect on the past and renew our patriotism so that we may continue to live in freedom and seek peace so that our veterans will not have died in vain. And whereas in tribute to these silent dead, it is fitting that we lift up our voices together and seek wisdom in our search for enduring peace. Now therefore, Mayor Mongi, for the city of North St. Paul, Minnesota, do hereby proclaim Monday, May 29th, 2023, as Memorial Day in the city of North St. Paul, and heartily thank our fallen and also those within our community who have worked so hard for many years to make their sacrifices, to make sure that their sacrifices are never forgotten.
Thank you very much, I'm going to be honored to sign both those, I appreciate you reading those for me, thank you. All right, we'll move on to consent agenda. Anybody go ahead and read them, please?
Yep, I'll read through them here and then if you guys want to need to pull anything. So, the consent agenda, May 2nd, 2023 workshop minutes, May 2nd, 2023 regular meeting minutes, May 2nd, 2023 closed meeting minutes, general claims of $878,276.25, HRA claims of $85.95, acceptance of the 2022 financial report with the city's audit firm of MMKR, ordinance amending the 2023 municipal fee schedule, amendment of on-sale liquor license for Roddy's Bar and Grill, ASME non-essential union supplemental agreement, and the 2022 sanitary sewer lining project, city project number 22-06.
Thank you. Anybody like to pull any?
I'd like to pull J.
J, okay.
It still says J, sorry, it doesn't move up to I.
Okay. Okay.
So, I will let you discuss.
J would become under city business, item A at that point?
None. Becomes A.
Okay. Thank you.
Would you like to discuss that?
We'll do it when we hit city business.
Okay, gotcha.
All right, thank you for approval consent.
So moved.
So moved, Councilmember Cole?
Second.
Second, compliment, Councilmember Schwers, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. Open to the public, do we have anybody online or in the building? Thank you. All right, we will close, or even open, I guess. How do you close something you didn't open? All right, city business action items. We'll move on to that, all right? No?
We moved the item of the ASME non-essential union supplemental agreement to the city business action item.
That's what I said, the first one, A.
Oh, there you go.
So...
I pulled it primary, I just wanted to have an open dialogue and conversation. Couple things on here, I'm certainly not opposed to summer hours, although in the consent agenda didn't call out the fact that city hall hours would change as well, it just called out the fact that the employees were going to change hours, so I wanted to make sure that everyone was aware of the fact that it may impact the hours for the city and their availability and opening, especially on Fridays. The other piece I just wanted to talk through was, really, I've got no issues with Monday through Thursday, I personally had a concern with 7:00 and 11:00 o'clock for the city being open on Fridays. And my thought is at least extend, you know, go 8:00 to noon or something. But I wanted to hear from that of the other council members and mayor, as well as reviewing Dan's packet from last month, and I think you've got some updated numbers. It called out, there were like 5,600 people paid their utility bills at the counter, that's like 400 people a month. So, my concern was, is it really that big? Because I don't think, that sounds like a big number. But by changing the hours, I just wanted to make sure that we had coverage there if it really is that big, because all the utility bills are due on a specific day, so there'd be a lot of people standing in line. So you got brought into it?
I got brought into it.
Way to educate me.
So you want me to try to educate? So, no, if, so I believe that that number is accurate at 5,600 on an annual basis. So let's break it down a little bit. There's 250 days, working days in a year, 260, take out the 10 holidays, we got 250, it brings us down to an approximation of about 22 per day. And we do, we're open for 8.5 hours per day, so that would bring us less than three individuals per hour that are at the counter to be serviced. So if we reduce four hours, just mathematically, it's approximately about 12 customers that we would, you know, be missing during those hours. And I can't really say that, you know, the hours between either 11 to, you know, the 11 or the 8 or the 12, whatever, it got switched, the four hours that we end up losing, that we're actually getting those three people per hour. Fridays are pretty quiet in the afternoon, especially in the summertime. But, and you know, with the great discussion we had at the workshop last city council meeting, and we've made some, a quick modification to the website to make sure that all of our customers know about signing up for the, basically the bank draft component to it. We were in the process of also redesigning the utility website to give more information from the recommendations that came here with questions and answers. So we're hoping that that alleviates, you know, some of the people from coming in during this time. And I think the most important part, if the city council decides to move forward with this in the summer hours, is that we really do need to advertise this. We need to make sure that we're communicating it to our residents and letting them know. And most importantly, this is, I look at this as, it's a trial. If we find out that there's many complaints and we're missing that service component to it and being able to respond to the residents of the city of North St. Paul, then we need to change our hours and revert back to where we're at. But many cities, we surveyed a number of different cities, many cities do have summer hours, and the ones around us do, Oakdale and so forth. So it was just kind of an opportunity to kind of change, especially after this last winter, it was kind of, you know, a way to try to, different approach to it. Plus, I'm normally here by 7:00 and here after 5:00 o'clock, and the utility line continues to ring between 7:00 to 8:00 and even after 4:30, when things are shut down. I would like to, and Barb in our utilities will keep track, and there's ways that we can do it, to keep track of the number of calls that we actually get during that timeframe to find out if that additional hour that we have four days a week gives us some more calls and what the volume is during that. I go back, I've been in government many, many years, one thing that I've always heard about government is your hours are 8:00 to 4:30, that's what I work. Well, the workforce is changing, but still, I would like to be able to kind of experiment and see with an extended hour for staff and in this model, it doesn't require overtime then, because they're doing their 40 hours per week. Did I do okay?
You did, bravo, bravo. My, yeah, I, quick follow-up, one, again, my focus is, I thank you for the breakdown, but the electric bill, the utility bills are generally due on a certain day, so there'd just be an increased volume. The other one is what unions are affected by this? I mean, is it?
I believe it's...
I don't know who ASME is, so which, who are they?
Confusing.
Just the clerical staff?
Yeah, so it's the staff that's in finance and the staff that's in community development are the ones that would be impacted by this.
Okay, so not staff that's in police, not...
Yeah, there's two ASME members that are in police, and I believe they're not included in this, is that correct?
Okay, thank you, that was the only other piece I didn't, we've got six or seven unions, I didn't know who fell under what.
And pretty much if they're gone, then the office is closed because they're the ones running the desks, is what you're saying, because it was kind of vague, the way this was written, so it was confusing to me, too.
Yeah, so clarity was one of the reasons I pulled it, and the other one is I just want to, I'm certainly not opposed, and I applaud the fact of flexibility, you know, for summer hours, I just wanted to get, kind of gather input from the peer set that's up here and see where everybody else's head was, because we're not allowed to talk unless we're in this room and recorded.
Exactly.
Did I do okay there?
For the moment, it will change. That's right. Is there any kind of, I do, for the phones, how many, you know, can you pull reports, how many calls do you get in the afternoon, that type of thing, as far as on a Fridays or anything like that? And another question I also had was, when people go up to the counter, are they disputing the bill, are they, because we have a drop box outside, everything else, usually when it comes to the counter, is it cash, or, you know, is there...
So, first question, we should be able to pull the records, I know how many are in the app.
Reporting.
Yep, so we should be able to do that, and so I'll talk to Barb tomorrow morning. The other part to it is, no, for the most part, the individuals that are coming in are either paying in cash or credit card.
Okay.
It's kind of the way that, you know, that is going. Of course, there can always be the occasional individual who's, you know, upset, most of them primarily are on the phone.
Okay, so I was just curious to see whether they come to counter, so the credit card and the cash, and then we, of course, we're talking about the other thing with the credit cards as far as going forward as well, so that may change people's thoughts on it, too, as well.
Absolutely, yep.
Any other questions, anybody has?
The only comment I would make is that if we do adopt this, that for the couple weeks until we adopt it, that we're making sure we personally deliver the message to everyone who pays at the hours it would be closed going forward, to let them know that, you know, going forward, this hour is not going to be closed.
Absolutely.
How about a resident HR expert lady here in business?
I understand clearly what they're going, they're proposing, so I'm comfortable with that, the only concern I'm with is Councilmember Cole, which I like more up to the noon hour, but that's, as long as it's consistent, starting Monday through Friday at 7:00, 7:30, I think that as you have a consistent start time and time, well communicated through our community, social media, I think it's fantastic that we are flexible this summer, the summer hours.
People are trying to sneak during lunch, usually 11 to 12, you can get out, so. Any, is everybody okay with 11?
Yeah.
As we're straightforward and see what happens, like you said, as long as we can take a look and, you know, get it out completely to everybody as much as we can, of course, not everybody's going to know until they walk up to the door. And if we have a sign on there, you know, straight from when we start, so people know in big letters that that's when it's happening, and if we get a lot of, you know, issues, then we can discuss that.
Absolutely.
Okay. All right. Are we good to vote?
Yes. As is? I wanted to hear from everybody else, I didn't...
Well, I appreciate that, because I was curious, too, about the union, I thought, is that everybody who that is, so, and then really, it's, the office would have to be closed, because those are the people that work the desk, so that's much better clarification, so I understand that better. All right, we have to move to adopt that, then?
So moved, I pulled it, I'll move for it.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Cole? Second?
Second.
Second. Councilmember Norby, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
There we go, thank you.
Good. Besides that, I didn't want to get done in 19 minutes.
All right, reports from city manager and departments, please.
Thank you, Mayor. So, kind of an update, we've got, so June 19th coming up, so that now passed state level as well, so that'll go into play this year, that will be a national holiday. Electric Department got a couple people just back from school, went to underground school down in Marshall, a couple projects they're working on, of course, behind Onseplow there, getting that overhead buried to underground for the Lily project. And also they'll be doing, so I don't know when the lights that are up at Silver Lake, they don't follow the trail very well, and it's just old, it's been up there quite a long time, so we're going to redo those and put the lights, space them properly and put them along the trail. Some of the lights that are up there, those cement ones that were from 1950s that used to be downtown. Oh, yeah. Jenny just got back from Clark School in St. Cloud, it's a good school, she said, as well. Finance just had a few people down in Texas for Tyler Technologies Training, which they go to, which they were all very happy with the class, that went well. As you know, Finance is looking at the credit card processing services that Dan is still working on. Got the budgets coming out, so next Friday, I believe, Friday the 26th, we have the first round is due from the department heads. PD has their 10th Annual Police Memorial this Thursday at 10:00 a.m., which will be at St. Pete's, that'll be good. Public Works had their cleanup, they had a really good turnout, sounds like 288 people had come in there. The downtown project, they've got the water in now, and I believe it's pressurized, they're also working on the storm sewer and sanitary sewer along there, and they'll work on getting the base of the road back in place and get that back put together. McKnight Road Project, the water main replacement, they're done with that now, now they're just patching the road back up, they're hoping by the end of next week they'll have that road all back together and won't have all the construction equipment out there. Fire Department is busy with code compliance this time of year. Their employee that works on that, they're going to do some extending them for hours to be more on top of that and try to get as much of that done as they can. PD, or the Fire Department also has seven live burns scheduled for this month, so they'll be busy out at the training center. And that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's do reports from council commissions and committees. Councilmember Norby?
On the 4th, we had our planning commission meeting, and again, what we're trying to do is go through and update the current zoning to match the comprehensive plan.
Thank you. At cost, you know, when you ask questions.
I would like to take this opportunity to really thank Brandy and all those working with her. We are given a ton of information, and they're able to put it in a manner where it's easy to understand, where, so we can talk intelligently about the decisions we're trying to make about all these changes and the fact, and the way that they're able to put this information in front of us makes these meetings go so much smoother. Can't thank her and everyone who's working with her enough.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Schwer?
Hi.
Hi.
I have all kinds of stuff.
Good.
I attended this past weekend the cleanup event with Councilmember Cole, and it was a pretty neat event, first time I've ever contributed on the cleanup portion of things. And needless to say, it is a well-oiled machine, that's for sure, Brandy and Christian did an incredible job with the communication between Ron and Randy and the crew. Like, city manager Randall indicated, 288 cars, not a single one was turned away, I stayed till the last car, not a single one was turned away, which was pretty exciting, so. Park and Rec Meeting is next Wednesday at 6:30 here in the council chambers. I do want to give a quick shout-out to our car show as they begin Friday at June 2nd at 6:00 p.m. Pay attention to social media regarding the parking and all the roadwork that's going on and where you can attend and park and still enjoy the car show itself, so, looking forward to our Friday night tradition. That is it for me.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Cole?
I'm going to pass the buck.
Ah, boy.
I was not unable to attend the EDA meeting, so you were, so I'll let you give the...
Thank you very much, I appreciate it. We had our EDA member, Don Jensen, we gave him a plaque and thanked him for his years of service, and it was so good to see him, he's been going through some health issues and just, just a pleasure to see him again, we'll be able to give him a good send-off as far as all the support that we give him for working, helping us out for so many years, so it was a great event, as far as a great meeting for that. We also talked about, we had a presentation for the lot across the way here on Margaret for the gentleman Mokehi, is his last name, I don't know his first name, Mr. Mokehi, there you go, or Father Mokehi, I always think of that from MASH, but yeah, Mr. Mokehi, he owns the building straight across from the big parking lot, so they were talking about some auto garages where there's a lot of cities that are having those in their man cave slash car garages, and there's some neat features and some different renderings he's doing, so we're looking into that and looking for some more information from him as well. Another thing we talked about was the greens, or the space in between sidewinders in the tattoo shop, the building that was torn down, the blacktop's in pretty bad shape, and in the middle where the building was is pretty much just Class 5. So we've been discussing that for looking at park up front for like with the car show, people able to have that little green space up front and then a parking lot in the back, that's coming in about $100,000, so we're looking at options with that as well. And one option, too, from Chris Thorson was look at getting the whole thing paved, so we're looking at that price, are looking at that as well. So, anything else in EDA you can think of that I missed?
You did an awesome job, thank you, sir.
Yeah, thank you for reminding me, even though you weren't there. I appreciate it.
Next EDA meeting is June 13th, 3:30 in council chambers.
Thank you. All right, if nothing else, we'll move on to general business. Councilmember Norby?
I had the wonderful pleasure to be able to sit down with one of our local business owners of Loves Ice Cream, was able to get some information on how they operate, and I would just encourage everyone to take advantage of all the unique and wonderful businesses we have in North St. Paul, there's a plethora of them out there, and they're all very interesting.
Just get some ice cream, get some treats.
I did, it was yummy.
I think we should send the big mayor over for that kind of stuff, that's the kind of, I can get behind.
Whoever's behind you, make sure you let them know you paid for it.
Yeah. Oh, look at the look on his face. You're after school now, you're in trouble. All right, any general business, Councilmember Schwer?
No, I don't think so.
Yeah, the only general business I had was, I also did attend the citywide cleanup with Councilmember Schwer, third time there, it didn't rain this year, it was nice. Just big giant shout-out to Ron, Randy, and Public Works Crew for pulling that thing off, the whole tennis organization, I mean, they, it was very smooth. Brandy and Chris for standing out there with directing traffic and getting everybody up there. Shout-out to the North St. Paul Police Department for their staffing as well and keeping things moving, so there's never a negative that comes out of that, everybody is very happy, and I don't know if we got a true count this year of beds and tires and containers of what they hauled away, but those trucks kept moving.
All right, well, that's great, I appreciate having that in North St. Paul, because there's a lot of things that once a year you're able to get rid of and you don't have to think about it and be able to do that, so I'm sure glad we have it, and thank you both for everybody, the staff, everybody that did that, that's a, that's a great project for us. Myself for general business, I went to the opening of the building that, the Lily Project, they have one on Selby Avenue, 594 Selby, so I was able to go to their grand opening for that apartment building. City manager Randall and also Brandy came along as well, so just a beautiful, beautiful complex, we're able to take a look at, they have studios, they have, every, every single one has its own washer and dryer in it, they have a beautiful full courtyard, and they really take pride in their buildings, I mean, it was a beautiful addition to that neighborhood, so it was really fun to see that, so it was, it was a, it was a good deal, I was glad I was able to go, go see that. And anything else you think I need to mention? This week seems to be just a blur to me, so I apologize, there's a lot of stuff going on, so, but I think that should cover that, so, anything else, anybody has, if not, a call for adjournment?
So moved, Your Honor.
So moved, Councilmember Cole, second?
I'll second.
Councilmember Schwer, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, thank you all.